Glad you're here to discuss this stuff tonight. You know, your rules and regulations.
Mm-hmm.
I have everything here.
One door, came out one.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, there it is. 30 years on. I'm gonna start the zoning for the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, what? So, we're in full agreement?
In agreement, yeah.
Well, we are.
In agreement. It's beautiful.
Yeah. Is that the only thing they have, 365 beaches? Or is that a deal?
Under Mass General Watch Act, the 38th Section 20F, this meeting is being recorded. First of all, I want to welcome our new member, George Stelges. So, I'm gonna go around and, you met Maria.
Jerry Catino.
Jerry Catino.
Barbara Pontalillo.
We met, and Roger. You know Ray and Cynthia. So, we are now back up to full consensus here. She had a planned vacation, but we are now back up to full strength. So, that's really good because that gives us a lot more flexibility. So, anyway, I am gonna start off the, with the, the first petition is 273 Cornell Road, petition of Emily Powers for a special permit to construct a one level detached, one bedroom accessory apartment, not greater than 897 square feet, with deck and sunroom as allowed by zoning by law, Article 9, Section 953. Subject property is located at 273 Cornell Road, Westport, Mass., and is shown on Assessors' Map, 81 Lot 4C. And what had, let's see, is this, uh, we got the... What it prompted that was a letter from Ralph Souza, the building commissioner, in which he said, "After review of the building permit application to construct an 897 square foot detached accessory apartment at 273 Cornell Road, the application is hereby denied. As per the Westport zoning by law, Article 953, zoning board of appeals may issue a special permit authorizing installation and use of a detached accessory apartment in a detached structure on a lot containing a single-family dwelling provided the following conditions are met." And that's all of Section 9.53. So, voting on this will be, uh, let me get my list. It will be Jerry Catino, Barbara Pontalillo, myself, Roger Minard, Ray Elias, and Cynthia Kozekowicz. George, you lucked out, you don't have to vote this time. So, sit back, relax, and just watch the proceedings. So, the way I'm gonna, the way this process works is I'll have the petitioner or petition representative come up before us, provide whatever information they think is pertinent. I expect that they are also gonna go through all of the requirements for the special permit. We will go through all of that. Once they have provided then whatever information that is pertinent, the board will then ask questions. When the board has completed this questioning, then I'll open it up to the general public. So, and since this is a special permit, it requires a vote of four out of five to grant the petition. So, will the petition representative come forward and sit right here? Nobody?
I submit, yes.
Good.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kirk Dukeshire.
And that, excuse me?
My name's Kirk Dukeshire.
Okay. Address?
My address is 72 Scotland Street in Hingham, Mass., here representing Emily Lori Powers.
Okay, you're the architect or the?
Builder.
Builder, okay.
Builder. Emily's here too, she's...
Okay.
Make this easier.
Yeah, come on up.
Make this easier.
Sure.
Good evening.
Can you hear Emily Powers?
Yes. Hi. Hi, everybody.
Okay, so, walk us through your, your application. What'd you plan on doing and?
Absolutely. We did, Emily did provide plans. I assume everybody has had a chance to take a look at the plot plan as well as the building plan.
Mm-hmm.
Emily is looking to build an accessory dwelling unit, just under the 900 square foot number, on the property, detached. We've worked through a couple designs, and this is the footprint that she wants to move forward with, is for, you know, for herself and her husband, on the property. We've gone, worked with Len Potter to go through septic redesign that would be required for the accessory dwelling unit. And, you know, right now, we're just going through your formal steps in terms of application and the process, and looking to just follow your requirements as far as, you know, building on the property.
Okay, can it sort of just lay us out where this new, this is, this is the new structure?
Correct.
Where on the property is the new structure? It's sort of, I drove by it. It looks like there, what there was, is it, it was like a shed?
Yes, it's behind, it's gonna be set way, set back from the road, quite a big distance, behind the current structure, which is a small garage.
There's a small garage.
Yeah, one car garage.
So, it's gonna be behind?
It's one car garage.
Okay. Oh, I see the garage, okay, so it's gonna be, okay.
Behind that, yeah.
Okay. And you show setbacks at 23 feet from the side and 30 feet from the rear, but is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, that 30 feet doesn't look to me like it includes the deck.
Right.
So, it looks like it'd be 20 feet.
Which is still within, still within zoning.
Yeah, well, in fact, you're only six.
Um, okay. So, let me just walk this through just a little bit of the design, you know, the, you said it's a, it's a one-bedroom.
Correct. One-bedroom with an open floor plan.
Open floor plan, okay.
Emily is looking for a lot of light, natural light, to come into the house, so we added a lot of windows to the space. In the main living area, we would raise the ceiling to have a vaulted cathedral ceiling. And again, her, she wants to, you know, be able to appreciate the natural beauty in the, you know, in her yard, which is beautiful. And she's just looking for natural, again, natural light. So, the house itself does have a lot of windows. The sunroom, again, has windows and it flows out nicely to the back deck area, which, again, she, you know, she envisioned spending, you know, quite a bit of time in the warmer months, again, where, again, it's just as much as possible, everything is flowing as kind of smoothly and naturally as possible to the inside of the house, the sunroom, the outside deck, and the outdoor, the, you know, the backyard.
But I see from your plan here, it's gonna, you have like a living room, bedroom, kitchen, bath, and then you have an office. Office is, I really can't quite read, do you know how, the size of the office?
Um, it's...
Does it actually say office on here?
Yeah, it says office.
Yeah. I'm not really...
On the small print.
It's in small print, it's...
It doesn't look the same on this.
It's roughly eight by 12, the...
Is that eight by six by 12 too? Is that, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's what I see. Same here, I'm having a hard time reading it myself. It's an arched doorway going in, so there is no actual door.
There's actually no actual door.
It's arched entry.
Okay.
Yeah. No closet.
No closet. Now, Ralph, so that, that makes it not a bedroom?
Makes it not a bedroom, it's an outstanding.
Okay. Because that, that's generally our main issue with, with accessory apartments is the bylaw requires no more than one bedroom. And we look to see if this can be, how readily this can be modified to make it a second bedroom. So, you know, those are the things that we're really concerned about.
Yeah.
Because it is a one-bedroom requirement.
Right.
I was more concerned about the sunroom on the other end.
But that's, that's unheated space.
It's unheated space.
So, it's not included?
But we don't include it, because it's unheated space.
Right.
But as Roger just says, very easily convertible.
Well, the house is intended to be for me and my husband. We are, you know, in our mid-50s, and we're seeing it as, you know, a retirement residence for us.
Oh, okay, so eventually you move into this and you rent out the house?
Possibly. I mean, right now, my parents are there, so they're about 80, and so they're living there.
Right. Well, one of the things that we generally require is, if we were to grant it, again, we're getting held ourselves, I just wanted to sort of advise you on this, is that we would require a deed restriction. Because what happens when you sell the property? Somebody comes into this and says, "Oh, I can make this into something else." By making, by placing it in the deed as a restriction, then that, that carries on to then whoever, you know, if you were to sell your property...
I understand. I don't, I think on that particular property, I think it'll, you know, the appeal and the attractiveness of the property will be, I think, will be, will be sort of accentuated with a smaller, you know, small guest house as opposed to a large, you know, second house on the lot. So, I think that would be appreciated, I think, for any future buyer, in any case. So, I don't think that's an issue for me.
Have you thought of handicap accessibility throughout it?
Um, not really, no. We haven't really given a lot of thought to that. That could be, that could be something to consider.
Not that it's necessary, I don't know.
One of the requirements also is septic. And you just got this, Maria, from the...
Yeah.
So, you...
They just said it's a four-bedroom.
The Board of Health approved for 273 Cornell Road for a four-bedroom.
I see his words.
Please, and, okay, so, how many bedrooms are in the house?
Um, in the main house?
Yes.
Like, I think they counted four. Yeah.
So, you don't have enough, so, so what are your plans for septic for this?
We've already gone through the septic with Len Potter. Are we doing the septic completely?
It says on a field card, three-bedroom house.
Yeah.
Oh?
Says on a field card, three-bedroom.
Yeah, it's approved by the Board of Health for four.
All right, so it's, all right, all right.
That would be the fourth bedroom.
Right, so me, three plus one.
Okay, so the house is...
That was my error, yeah.
So, there are three bedrooms in the house?
Yes.
Were you saying that Len Potter's putting in another septic anyway?
Uh, well, we've, yeah, the first step in the process was looking into the septic issues. And so, Len Potter, he advised us to expand the septic system and to install the de-nitrification system as well.
So, it's gonna be expanded anyway?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Are you going to put in the de-nitrification system?
Yes, it's already approved.
Apparently, it's, it's required. I mean, as far as I know, it's required, so...
Yeah, any new septic systems. It looks like it had a...
If it's not, I mean, that would be wonderful. Someone could tell me if it's not required.
No, that's, it's there.
Not required, no, it's gonna be required soon enough, so, best do it once.
Okay. Have you, have you all reviewed the requirements for the septic, for the special permit?
Yes.
Okay, what I'd like you to do then is run through them for me and identify how well you plan on, if I have a copy here, if you don't...
I would love a copy. I think, I think, I think there were some recently updated, so I'm not sure I have the latest.
It's, uh, I have, right here. I have a copy in my office. No, I have one, just a minute ago.
9.5.3.
Oh, the actual file. I think you have that.
That's the rules, that's...
I can go get one. Let me get that. This is basically all.
Yeah, I know. I had to come up to Emily when she came in.
You have?
I'll go get it.
Okay, sorry about that.
I actually, the plot plan.
Here. These are section 953.
I think that's what I'm thinking, which I've got plus a lot of...
Busy, busy.
I've got it.
It's A through J requirements.
Okay.
So, just read it off and, and describe how you're going to comply with that.
All right. It says, "One accessory apartment shall be allowed by right, providing the following criteria are met: A, approval from the Board of Health," which I believe we have covered already with a septic design that's been approved.
Yeah.
"Approval from the fire department," which...
Um, I think you're reading the wrong thing.
Yeah. Oh, detached.
There you go.
There you go. Well, we were off to a good start, weren't we?
You were off to a good start anyway.
Yeah. Okay, purpose and intent, the intent of permitting a detached accessory apartment is to provide, this section here, provide older homeowners, this, that's, those are just purpose and intent. You don't want me... Stay more close.
Is that what you want?
Is that the form that I just gave you? Those are the requirements.
All right. Try it again. Um, the detached, oh, so, A, the detached accessory apartment will be a complete, separate housekeeping unit containing a kitchen, living room, a bathroom, and a maximum of one bedroom. Only one accessory apartment may be created within a single-family dwelling or house lot. So, that is what we're complying with, the plans that we've, we've provided for this meeting. Um, B, detached accessory apartments shall be occupied by no more than two persons. It'll be Emily and her husband Marco.
Okay. And again, that's something that we would probably put in the deed restriction as well because going along the one-bedroom...
In terms of two.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood. Uh, "The owner of the property in which the detached accessory apartment is created must occupy at least one of the dwelling units. The gross floor area of a detached accessory apartment shall not be greater than 900 square feet. The gross floor area shall be, shall include the interior finished abitable area to be used exclusively for the accessory apartment. That is the case, Emily and her husband, as well as her parents, will be on the property."
Okay. And it's less than 900 square feet?
It's, it's shy of 900 square feet.
The number you gave you, is that outside dimensions or inside?
That's the outside dimensions, I believe.
So, you're actually less than that?
Yes.
Because really, we, we consider square footage to be livable square footage.
Livable square feet, okay.
So, you're even a little less than, but you're under the 900 anyway.
Under the 900, yeah.
And it does not include the sunroom, right?
It does not include the sunroom.
Because it's a free-season sunroom, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Not conditioned space. Um, C, no, I just said that. D, off-street parking shall meet the requirements of Section 8.3 of these bylaws. If anyone's gone to the property, you see there's a very long, large...
It's a very long, yeah.
...driveway, plenty of space. E, any new construction shall be in accordance with the current height and setback requirements for the district in which it is located, which I believe we, well, well within.
Right. It's a single floor, so...
Yeah, single floor. F, prior to approval of the special permit for a detached accessory apartment, the septic system that will accommodate the additional bedroom must be approved by the Westport Board of Health and comply with the state sanitary code, which it already has.
Okay.
Uh, G, any property that has been granted a special permit for a detached accessory apartment shall not be further divided unless all zoning requirements can be met for the district in which it is located, which, again, we, we meet.
Yeah, and again, that may be something that goes in the, the...
Deed restriction.
The deed restriction.
Yeah.
Well, all that really is saying is, is that you, you cannot break up the, the property unless you have enough square footage and frontage and all that, which, which, which doesn't, doesn't...
I think we're something like, I think, 8,000 square feet short of a double lot.
That, so you wouldn't be able to...
Right.
...tug-of-it at any...
But in terms of frontage, I think it's okay. But it's just, we're, we're missing a few square feet, so...
Um, H, prior to approval of a special permit for a detached accessory apartment, the Board of, the Board shall make the following findings. One, the detached accessory apartment will not impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood in which it is located. Hopefully, you have, you have the plans here and see where it's setback, you'd agree with that. And two, the detached accessory apartment shall not be detrimental to the abutting properties, which, again, being very far back, and there's one abutting property to the right when you're looking at the house, and nothing, nothing to the left. I, in order to encourage the development of housing units for disabled individuals and persons with limited mobility, the zoning board of appeals may allow reasonable deviation from the dimensional requirements where necessary to install features that facilitate access and mobility for, or to accommodate utilization of existing structures such as a garage or barn, and that is...
So, that really doesn't apply to you because you've already met the 900 and, the 900 square foot?
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds like you comply with all of the special requirement, special permit requirements. And again, the only thing I had to go through is the, according to Ralph, the office is not considered a bedroom. It, um, I guess it could be large enough, but there's, but you said there was, it's an arch door.
This is, it has an open archway.
It's an open archway.
I work from home too, so I do need an office.
Yes, yeah, I understand that.
And no closet.
But we're not necessarily worried about you. It's when you sell the property, someday, what is the next person gonna do?
I don't intend to sell it very soon.
But again, and then we cover ourselves somewhat by requiring a deed restriction so that the next person, whoever owns the property next, would also understand, unless we change bylaws between now and then, which could, could also happen, that they are not allowed to put two bedrooms in there. The things that we're concerned about from the town viewpoint, when the town voted this in five, six, did we even figure out how long ago this was approved? It's gotta be at least five or six years, right?
2015.
When?
2015.
That was the first one.
Yeah, the very first.
Okay.
That was the interior, I think. Was that the...
The very first de-catch.
Yeah. Was, the reason why the town voted to allow this was to be able to keep the residents here, so that if, you know, as you get older, you're, you know, you, like I said, you can have your parents live with you rather than putting them in a nursing home or whatever, or, you know, if you had, somebody needed extra care, you could care for them on your property. Or if you needed the extra income, that was fine as well, as long as you continued to live there. But we didn't want was, from a town standpoint, was just people buying a property just to rent. That's, they wanted to keep it still, you know, a nice rural community where, you know...
This is my childhood home.
Is it really?
My parents bought this house when I was about 10-years-old, and prior to that, we lived across the street, 256 Cornell Road, which belonged to Mr. Barker, Bill Barker. So, I've been a resident, I was a resident on Cornell Road from approximately 1977 until, well, let's say when I graduated from college in 1990. So, I consider it my home.
What is the width of the doorway into the bathroom? I can't read it, I'm here. Don't read.
I think it's, I think it's a 30-inch or 32-inch width. I'm having a hard time seeing it myself.
My concern is, it has nothing to do with the regulation, but just common sense is to make that wider enough so that a wheelchair could...
Get in there.
...traverson if you're looking at parents potentially living there. Try to encourage that with everybody wherever there's...
Thanks, yes, that's a good suggestion.
Doorways.
Absolutely.
Just widen them up a little bit if you can.
Absolutely. Thanks for the suggestion.
We were, we were trying to do that, and I apologize, I can't read it, but we were going for the widest doorway we could and widest access, and we're, you know, we're working with limited space, so we're trying to maximize those types of openings.
I mean, in terms of that, this handicap, let's say, exception to the size limitations, if during the building process, I mean, if there were, you know, a bit of leeway, let's say, if we were to take into consideration the possibility that my elderly parents might actually use, we might do a swap, and perhaps my elderly parents, who, you know, my mother is ailing, so it might actually be a possibility for us to consider, you know, having a bit of leeway in terms of, like, just the width of the, of the house.
I might advise you that you, you may get old someday.
Oh, I don't need that.
No.
I don't need anybody to tell me that.
But in addition, you never know if you have an accident or something.
Of course, yeah.
I mean, you don't know, so, you know, this is kind of a permanent thing.
But in terms of our, right, in terms of our present situation, I would say it's, you know, it would be more likely that it's my parents who would have, you know, mobility problems, problems earlier than, than my husband and myself, so...
But one of the things that we would, would do at the end, again, I'm just saying, if we were to grant this, this would become the, the plan of record. Any deviation to this, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to come from the Board of Health.
Oh, redo, okay, I see, okay.
You could definitely get a bigger door.
So, if you think you want to change, you know, now would be the time to do it.
Okay.
You know, if you want to move a door or whatever, that's not a big deal, but, but changing the size of the structure is...
Do we need to, we need to submit that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Kirk has something to say, so...
So, we, when we submitted this, it was, we had made some design changes, not, nothing to the footprint or the floor, floor plan of the house, but this is what Emily originally wanted, this, this look. So, we made design changes. Window locations and sizes, very similar to what they were, but the, the outside view of it, the same. The floor plan is identical, the footprint's identical, so if that's what you're saying, we would certainly want to include this.
You include that.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Okay.
Maybe, can we maybe make copies of this?
Yeah.
And submit it?
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, you can just take that in and stamp it.
It's not, I mean, from a substantive standpoint, it's the same, there are just some design tweaks that we just wanted to make a couple of little improvements.
If they decide to open up doorways for accessibility purposes, they don't have to, they don't have to do that. It doesn't increase the square footage.
Okay.
But, yeah, you're not changing it.
As long as it explains the footprint.
You're submitting a plan, but we're worried about the big picture. Where you put a window, I don't care.
Right.
You know, if you want to move a door a little bit, that's, you know, but, you know, you know, the dimensions, the outside dimensions, and...
That's why the bylaw specifically addresses potential modification, even to the 900 square feet limit, if it's needed to facilitate handicap accessibility.
I see one copy we have now, I think.
No.
Oh, do you have other copies of these? Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. So, this is still the plan you're playing, you're, you're going with?
This one, yes. I mean, this is the same...
As far as floor plan wise.
Oh, right, the floor plan should be identical?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? And George, you're welcome to chime in, this is...
Right now, I don't know enough.
That's... Any other questions from the board?
I don't have anything.
No? Having none, I'll open it up for the floor. Anybody who would want to comment on this, if you do, you can come up to a microphone. I guess, seeing none? Any other comments before I, no?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All that says is, we're now done with the information, we will now discuss it, we will not take any information, if we have a question, we can answer, ask it, but, you know, we will now just discuss it and render a decision. And again, it requires a, an affirmative vote of four of the members to approve.
Okay, great, I can hand this back, back to you.
Yep, okay.
I don't have any problems, I see this is pretty straightforward, you know, setback requirements are all there, septic systems there.
Same here.
The minimum requirements are there.
Large lot with a lot of privacy, so you're not impeding on anybody else's living situation.
Yeah.
We usually all drive by the property, so you probably had a lot of traffic.
I would go by right when they're picking your trash up in both directions. No, yes, I, what we generally look at, as long as you meet all the requirements, the A through J requirements, and certainly the, some of the important ones of one bedroom, only two people living there, septic system that's been approved, I mean, those are all major considerations, and you've done your homework on all of that. So I have, I have certainly no issues with it. I drove by it, and like you said, I don't think you're going to be able to see it behind your garage, so.
Right, we don't know quite yet, we don't know how many trees might come down.
Oh, yeah.
It might be slightly more visible than it is, than it would be like now, but we'd like to keep, you know, keep the vegetation, keep the trees, you know.
Yeah, but you're going to be substantially distant from the road, so.
Yes.
Even then, it's not really a consideration, as long as it meets the setback requirements. Where you put it is, is, you know, is up to you. Any other comments before I, nope, okay, I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
You got it, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit at 273 Cornell Road for Emily Powers to construct a one-level detached one-bedroom accessory apartment, not greater than 897 square feet, with a deck and sunroom, as allowed by zoning by law, Article 9, Section 953. The subject property is located at 273 Cornell Road and subject to the plans submitted to date.
And subject to?
Deed restriction.
The deed restriction, which Maria, you have paperwork for the, for the deed restriction. So, and the deed restriction includes the things like, there will only be one bedroom, there'll only be two people living there, that, those, I think those considerations.
Second motion.
Your second motion. I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that the record shows unanimous. There is a 20-day waiting period, so don't start building for 20 days. Good luck, and, you know, I hope this all turns out for you. So now you can stay in Westport for a lot longer.
I'm very happy to be here, back home. I actually lived for almost 30 years in Milan, Italy.
Yeah.
And we moved back from Europe recently.
Cornell's a nice road, I mean, it's a.
It's beautiful.
It kind of connects.
I appreciate it more now than I did when I was 16.
Okay, okay, I can understand that.
I do appreciate it now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Look, just like your mother.
Hello.
I could, I could reckon, I recognize, could recognize you as your, her daughter.
Thanks.
When I see your mom in the post office, gaiety. I don't see him as often anymore, after COVID, we used to sit at the bar together.
They're fine, they're doing fine.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we just don't go as much either, so.
I know, nobody does, yeah.
So it's the post office's dump as we see everybody.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you for coming. Okay, the second order of business for the evening is a petition, 29 Fairway Drive, petition of David Maher for finding that the demolition of the existing non-conforming structure and new construction of a single-family dwelling in compliance with setback requirements shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use for the neighborhood mandated by zoning by law, Article 5, Section 533. Subject property is located at 29 Fairway Drive, Westport, Mass., and is shown on accessory map, 88 Law 199. Seated, the member seated for this will be Jerry Cutino, Barbara Potolivo, myself, Raj Menard, Ray Elias, and Cynthia Kozekowicz. Since this is a finding, a simple majority of three is required. So again, it would be the same process as previous. The petitioner will come up, provide whatever information is pertinent, we, the board will ask questions. After we've completed asking questions, I'll open it up to the, the audience. So petitioner or petition representative, come up and identify yourself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Richard DeJarden. I'm an attorney here in Westport with offices at 791 Main Road, and I have here with me the petitioner, David Maher. David?
Yep, David Maher. I live in Barrington, Rhode Island, and have, have a long, long history here in Westport as well.
We also have owner of the, of the premises, Pamela Manchester, is also a co-petitioner in that she's an owner of the premises. I'd also like to introduce very quickly, because they will be speaking here shortly as we, as we proceed, Rich, Ricio of Field Engineering Survey, an engineer person as regards this property, will be talking to you about physical dimensions, topographical location of amenities, that, that sort of item as we proceed. And also I have with us, and will be speaking as far as the actual plans of the property, is the con, from the contractor, Howland Company, Henry Ladd. And Henry's got some plans, he will come up at some point and show you what this place, should we get the requested finding that we're looking for, will look like, et cetera, et cetera.
Did we have an objection letter for this? I thought I saw one.
The denial, right here?
Yeah.
You need it?
Yes, we did.
I'm just going to read you what prompted this whole situation, is a letter from Ralph Souza. After review of the submitted building permit, application to demolish and remove the existing 2,157 square foot dwelling and reconstruct a two-level 4376 square foot dwelling, including decks, in its place, has been determined the setbacks comply with the zoning by law and setback requirements. The application is designed, however, as per the zoning bylaws, alteration of pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be altered, providing there is a finding by the Board of Appeals that such an alteration should not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. That's what prompted all this, and, and I want to advise everybody that from a, our town lawyer's standpoint, detrimental to the existing, to the neighborhood, is really, is relevant to things like traffic, safety, those kind of things, not necessarily aesthetics of your structure. So, anyway, having said that, why don't you continue?
Proceeding, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give everybody a simple, David, do you want to say anything before I just go?
Go right ahead, Rick, yeah.
I want to give everybody a start here as we, as we go through this. The subdivision in question was created in 1950, approximately, by a gentleman from the harbor by the name of Stephen Howland. If you go to the harbor and you see that big building, it's called the Howland House, that was Stephen Howland. He had a farm, he was a, he was a farmer and a cow dealer, and he was developing some of that, from that property that abuts the Coxit Club. And both, in the southern section, I think you had a case recently right on the corner of Atlantic Avenue and Howland Road.
Yes.
That was Howland land that was developed at the same time this, this property was. This is more northerly from that area, and it abuts the club. If I could give this to Maria and everybody could get a copy, I'll just keep two. You're, you're going to see approximately a 20-lot subdivision. This bigger lot was carved in two at some point, and you'll see 100 by 130-foot premises. Our subject premises is one of those. This shows as Pierce Road, it's still called Pierce Road, our property comes right down, and you would bump into it if you kept driving onto the property. This, this plan shows Russell Road, they never called it Russell Road, they called it Fairway Drive, but the plan, the plan is somewhat different than that. And you will see, you will see like-sized homes all over that neighborhood if you've driven through it. That gives you a feeling as to what it is, the neighborhood that we're, that we're, that we're part of. In addition to normal zoning requirements for this premises, there are some private deed restrictions that affect all of the lots. When, when Mr. Howland conveyed them out in his deeds, he had a four, four paragraph set of restrictions, I'm going to, I'm going to pass those around as well for you, board members, to look at if you want to. And they're pretty, pretty basic, pretty simple. Remember, this is pre-zoning in Westport, way pre-zoning in Westport, about 10, 12 years. So he, I guess you could argue it either way, but, but he said that basically, any outbuilding, he didn't want outbuildings, garages or other, you know, chicken, chicken coops or, or anything you could refer to as an outbuilding, to be constructed except if it was attached to the house by either breezeway or other attachment. So if you look through that neighborhood.
That's because of all those breezeways.
Right, you just see all those little breezeways, and you see, you see tight little, little premises, not necessarily little, but the premises are all tight in that there's no other properties in, in the yards. And then he goes on to say that any dwelling, he, he has some, some setback requirements. He goes to 30 feet from the, from any adjoining way, you have to be back that far, I think it's 25 normally for, for town zoning, and instead of 10 feet for the side lots, it's 20 feet. The, the petitioners took this into, into consideration when, in addition to the, the Westport zoning bylaws, when they did their planning, and they, they're, we are indicating to you that we are in conformity with both this private restriction as well as the public. Restrictions by themselves, people forget, they end after 20 and 21 years unless they are brought up to date by somebody doing the appropriate filing at the registry of deeds. In this case, landowners in this area have done that a couple of times, so these private restrictions are still.
Are still valid.
Still valid.
Yeah.
And, and people have to follow them. I'm, I'm trying to go as quickly as we can in order to have other, other people get their say here. I am going to set, set around, assessment cards on the various properties immediately around.
Yeah, that's okay, you don't need to do that.
You don't, you don't need those.
No.
All right, that's, that's good. And what you'll see when you.
I think we all drove by it, so we know.
And if you, if you look at it, you'll see, you'll see as many as six bedrooms house in this little neighborhood, there's only one of those. You'll see a five, and you'll see several fours, plenty of threes, and a two. So you'll see a whole panoply of, of different buildings and different sizes, some, clearly every single one of these buildings over time has had some additions to them and/or reconstructed completely. I'm going to say easily eight to 10 of them are complete reconstructions, and the rest are modifications of the existing building. But if we don't have to go there, we won't go there, fine by me. And I think we're, we're ready to talk with the first.
Okay.
Rich, Ricio, who's talking, will talk about what the plot looks like that we're, we're building this reconstruction.
Okay, why don't you pull the microphone that's there up, or move the thing back or whatever, so you can. Should then just state your name and, and affiliate.
I'm Richard Chiel from Field Engineering. Our office is in 11 Industrial Bridge Drive in Matapoiset. We're the civil engineers of record here. We worked with Mike Boucher on the survey, and, and we've been working on the, the septic design and the permitting. As we see here, there's an existing three-bedroom dwelling with a substantial deck off the backside.
The left is the existing layout?
This is the existing layout, correct. And then on the, on the right-hand side is the proposed, once again, it's a three-bedroom dwelling, respecting all the setbacks, as, as Rick had mentioned during his presentation. Basically, in the same spot has the existing house, proposing a paved driveway in this area here with a cobble-type driveway into a side load, a side load garage. There is an existing wetland system off of the property that's shown in this, in this greenish hatch here. We have gone to our conservation commission and received an order of conditions approving the, the site plan, the, the septic replacement as well. We are working with the board of health currently on the approval of replacement septic system. The existing three-bedroom system is located in this dashed area here, will be required to be a much larger system, still three bedrooms, but with the new code requirements and the perk test, or the, the testing we've done on site to date, it was a much larger leaching field that we need. Also, even though we are going from three-bedroom to three-bedroom, under the, the town's bylaws, this is considered a new construction, which requires us to include denitrification as well. So we are in.
Ralph, this isn't a flood zone, is it?
No, not at all.
Not, okay.
No, no. So we are working with the, with the board of health on getting our final approval on, on the septic design. The lot is serviced by a well, which is located in the front of the building. The, the leaching field is actually further away from the well than the existing leaching field. We also have proposed stormwater management features on the site to handle the roof drainage, as, once again, as required by the board of health requirements under their stormwater bylaws. And I think that's basically a presentation of, of the site plan itself.
I can see, can you just identify the, the setbacks that you have there?
Yes.
Well, not the front, the two, yeah.
On, on the proposed, we're at 30.2 feet.
Okay.
Off the front, 20.2 feet here off the side, 20.2 over here, and then on this side, the closest point is 20 feet, and 22.3 there, and we're obviously well within.
Okay.
The rear setbacks. And same thing at the front, we're at 30.2 for the front.
Is this the exact same footprint? It looks to be.
It's pretty, pretty, I'm not, maybe not to the inch, but it's pretty close to the, the, the footprint of.
But the other one had a lot of deck.
Yes, we've got more house, and then this is a stone-like patio off the back.
Yeah.
If you count the, if you count the deck on the existing residence, the footprint of the building is smaller than, than the existing.
Because you have the little cutout, yeah.
That's right. There's some terraces that, that make it very, very close, but it's slightly smaller.
And you're going to have a one-car garage underneath, is that the?
Yeah, that's what's in.
Yeah, well, I can.
Yeah.
I'm Henry Ladd, I'm with Howland Company, based in South Dartmouth.
Okay.
I'll see if I can get the elevation plan to show, to stand up for you.
Yeah, okay.
Get a look of what this looks like here, I don't know how well it will stay enough, I can hold it, there you go. So to answer the question about the garage, it's a first-floor garage side entry, so you enter it on the left side of the house, it's based from the street. It's a shingle-style home, as noted previously, it's three bedrooms, white cedar sidewall shingles, a red cedar roof, some field stone detailing, so we think it fits very nicely in the local architectural vernacular.
What's the maximum height?
The actual, the maximum height is just under, I think it's 28, sorry, 26'8 to the ridge line.
So you go around to the left and?
That's correct, yes, so if you, the driveway comes on the left side of the house, the driveway, the garage, you swing into the right to get into the garage, and it's all attached, and as Rick noted, no, no accessory buildings or attached structures.
I would just add, the garage where it is, is our, this is our second design, the first design met the town requirements, but not that local deed. So when we hit round two, we had to squeeze it a bit, and instead of a front-facing garage, they decided to move it, move it into the side.
You can see here's the.
That's all the local deed restrictions.
Here's the side elevation.
Don't get a really long truck, you're going to get it in there.
Can I answer any other questions about the, the building details or, or design? Happy to.
Right, right. There's no other issue with, with the driveway like being on that side? No, okay. Our, our main issues with a finding, and that's all we're doing here, I, you know, how you build your house is your, is your issue, the, the main issue with finding is how does it affect the neighborhood from things like safety, parking, trans, you know, traffic? You're right at the, at the, at the T.
At the T.
Of the road, you know, if you come down there, the road, you run right into your house.
Yeah.
So obviously, there's an impact of, so, you know, at first I was, I was looking at it, I didn't look at it close enough to see where the garage was, but, yeah, to make sure that in fact you have enough off-street parking, and, you know, that you're not interfering with the traffic pattern essentially, and that's, by having it off-center actually sort of helps that, I would think.
You'd think so.
Just a curiosity, doesn't affect this directly, but you mentioned a well, are those houses along down in there served by individual wells as opposed to the water system?
Yes.
Interesting.
Water system doesn't, doesn't go up that high. Howland ran the water system too, and at his house.
If you only go down another couple hundred feet, there's no water.
Right, you get, you get to the no-water place pretty quick.
That's why I was curious about that.
Now, who lives in the, in, on the property now?
So we bought the property at the end of 2020, and we've used it in the summer, and our intention was to always do this. It's pretty old, and, and we got to the point of, we just, we felt it wasn't worth spending to repair and repair and repair, so, but we've owned it for the last couple of years. And nobody's in there right now.
Nobody's in there.
No, it's in there right now. We've used it in the summertime.
So it, I mean. So it, I mean, not that this aren't any of our business, but you're planning on moving there, you're just going to rent it out?
Yeah, so we have, we've, my father-in-law's been here for ninety years, my wife's been here her whole life. We have four kids who grew up here, and we're going to, we're going to, this is our, this is our, you know, long-term, long-term family planning. Just, we.
Well, it's in a perfect location. You've got the golf course on the inside and water in the back.
And that's what we drew it.
I mean, how could you?
We didn't buy the house. So it's a one-and-a-half story, where the upstairs, you have to, you have to duck to walk in the hallway, so.
It's really.
The location is.
The current, the current upstairs.
When we drove by him, I said, why do you want to knock a house down? It looks nice, but like you said, it's.
It's probably six-two in that.
Okay. Do you guys golf?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
All right, there you go.
So we liked looking at the golf course.
Yes.
And the ocean.
Sure.
And the pond, and the, that's, that's the beauty of the place.
Right.
But, yeah, all our poor adult children, the hope is that this is a magnet for them to come see mom and dad down the road.
Or come back and live with you when they can't afford something else.
You said that, not me.
Give them the house in Barrington, right?
Yeah.
They're going to stay there.
Yes. Well, I mean, I drove by the property, and it's, you know, I mean, especially for a golfer, you can't ask for anything better than, I mean, it's, I feel, what T is, what green is that writing back?
That's the ninth hole.
That's the ninth hole, halfway.
Yeah.
No, it's only a half, it's only a nine-hole course.
Oh, it's only a nine-hole course?
Yeah.
So it shows you how much I know about it.
For your home, at that point.
So, any other questions from the board? If there were any questions, we'll open it up to the audience, everybody from the audience. Seeing none, I'll detain a motion to close.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. All that means is we're not, you know, we'll deliberate and, and make a decision. I think this is, I think this one is like, the other one is pretty straightforward. As far as a finding is concerned, again, you're going to have to go through all the other, you've already been through conservation, you know, you're going to have to be working with Ralph for the next year. There's a lot of wickets you're going to have to go through. This one is just, because it is a non-conforming property, modifying it requires a finding to make sure that what you do doesn't affect the, the property, the neighborhood, and mostly from things like, like I said, like safety, traffic, you know, how does it affect the overall neighborhood? You know, we're not really concerned about the style of the house, that's, you know, we certainly don't dictate what was appropriate for a neighborhood, that's, that's not really our job. So I, I have, I mean, I think this is very straightforward.
They're popping it right where their little one was.
You know, it, it meets all the zoning requirements, it's going to be, you know, a fantastic property. There are other properties close to it that are certainly as large, so it's, you know, not that that's an issue, but it, it would fit in, so I don't have any issues with it.
Yeah, there seems to be a trend in the neighborhood, each one is upgrading.
Yeah, well, it's, it's an old neighborhood, so, you know, a lot of the ones even further down are all cottages, so eventually, understanding that all that property now is, is very, very valuable, you know, making them into, you know, four-season houses now is, you know, is something that we see a lot of.
I think it's very nice that Mr. Howland had the foresight to put his own restrictions.
Put his restrictions in.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I think in the long run, that's been very helpful.
And, and the, the property owners have kept it up. That's, that's impressive.
It is impressive.
It is impressive, yes. And it just shows you the neighborhood is concerned about, you know, about keeping their, the property the way they want the property kept. That's why, you know, I think that's, that's, you know, that's a, that's a good point.
Lots of us in Westport have very nice properties, and we have no control over what our neighbor might do.
Correct.
Or does, zero.
Absolutely, yeah.
Called zoning, or, or lack of enforcement, zoning, so.
Right, right.
Two-edged sword.
Yep. So, having said that, I will, I will make a motion, since I haven't done that today. So we read the. I make a motion to, to grant a petition from David, is it Maher or?
Maher.
Maher, okay.
Yes.
I know a lot of people.
Yeah.
There's different ways of, anyway, I, I grant the petition of David Maher for a finding that the demolition of the existing non-conforming structure and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling recorded for compliance setback requirement shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by a zoning bylaw, Article Five, Section 523, subjecting property located at Twenty-Nine Fairway Drive, Westport, Mass., as shown in Mass.'s assessor's map, eighty-eight lots, one ninety-nine, the only condition being in accordance with the, with the plan submitted today. And again, if you want to change the inside, you know, what we talk about in plans are the, you know, the, you know, the overall, where everything is located, part of the plan. So I.
I'll second that.
Any discussion before I vote?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Let the record show it's unanimous. There is a twenty-day wait period, so don't knock it down quite yet, but, you know, congratulations, and I hope it works out for you. And I'll have to drive by as you, as you're doing this.
Please do.
Because it looks like it's going to be an interesting project.
Yeah. If I could end by thanking the zoning board of appeals for your attention and for your staff's attention.
Oh, Maria, we can't do without Maria.
We have enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you all for attending.
Maria.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
You have to, you have to travel with a bodyguard now?
I do. I do. She's, she's still with me?
Yeah, she's still.
Hope you take her out now.
Okay, the next order of business is meeting minutes for February twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. So I took, meeting minutes were provided to Maria. Maria has collected all the comments, so I will detain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
You got to do something? Tell me to do something.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks a lot, Ralph.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Those are through, I'll sign these. Last order, is there any other, before I get to the, the rules and procedures?
I have just one, one item of interest.
One item, okay.
Going through some of my old papers the other day, I happened to come across this memo.
Looks a little yellow.
Yeah, well, it is.
There's only, only your fifty years old.
November seventh, two thousand and three, there's a memo.
At least it's this century.
To the member of Board of Appeals from Maria, the recording secretary, and it was just a routine thing about a public notice for the hearing, but I found it interesting that it was that long ago that, that she was with us, and for a while.
Oh, you've been here twenty years?
But, but then she.
She had a break.
Because she had a no-benefit position, and.
Mm-hmm.
She had to cobble different parts of town things together just to get, have a job, and she had an opportunity to go off and get a, get a real job.
That was a mistake. That was a mistake.
Well, that was, I think.
Look at this.
Anyway, I just, I was going to try to help her, happen to come across this.
Okay, I sent out copies of the, my markup of our procedural rules and regulations. I sent out two copies. One of them shows the front two, you know, the, you know, how all the changes are made. And the other one has it actually incorporated, so you can see how it actually reads. Sometimes it's, it's not, it's not obvious, so I sent out both, both copies. So if anybody has comments, let me get my.
Well, I've got two of them that, and they both say revision dated the same day, so, but I noticed that changes had been made, so I'm assuming that the one where the correction was made, on the front page, spelling of board.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm assuming that's the latest one?
That was just done like a couple days ago, yeah.
That the latest one?
Yes.
That's the one we're working, okay, that's what I assumed, because the other copies I had didn't have that correction.
That was the only correction with that version, was just.
I'd like to see that, because it gave me something to gauge a fine.
Right. Okay, let me just run through quickly what I, what I changed. And first of all, that, under section one, there was a whole, two, or two paragraphs there, if you look on the, the front two sheet, there was a whole thing about, you know, the board consists of five members and the reg, that's not, all I did was move that. Yeah. To the section on members, which is where it really belongs. So it's not necessarily a change, it's just a change in placement.
Yeah.
The next is the, some minor things, the chair shall receive and review all documentation as requested. I think all of them say that. Before, it just said, you know, the chair shall vote on. It's, obviously, our bigger job is you review, receive and review all the documentation, not only the chair, the vice chair, all the members. So you'll see that in, in all of those. Again, there's a section there in the vice chair where it says, in case the chair and vice chair are absent, again, that was just moving it somewheres else. It wasn't really appropriate to put it under the vice chair, it was moved to the section under members. So it's just making it flow better, not necessarily changing things. So the next thing was. Again, under the regular members and the alternate members, again, it adds the note saying that they all receive and review documentation and, you know, and, and vote, rather than just saying that, that you vote. Next is under fees, I'll be just identifying that the, that the fees are posted on the, on the website. Next is under public notice. It just deletes that after asserting that the application is in proper form. Technically, and again, I should probably change this, because now, this, this actually includes the fact that, should, this one should have the fact that we don't have a clerk anymore, we have a zoning board administrator.
Right.
So there are a couple places where I think, where it says the board clerk, they should all be changed to zoning board administrator.
Right.
And I will do that. But originally, we said that the clerk shall, after asserting that the application is in proper form, do something. Well, technically, that's not really the case. The applicant can, can apply whether or not Maria looks at it and, and does something. So, so that part, you know, I just struck it out. It's not, we really can't abide by that. If, if the applicant wants to put in a form that doesn't, that is wrong, we can't stop it.
So be it.
We can't stop it. You know, he goes to the clerk, the clerk stamps it, and that's, and that's it.
Roger, now, when you say you struck it out, it's not included in this printed version, or it still is, because I, I still find it as a contradiction. But I, I can get to that when I go through my, my.
Let me go under public notice, section five. See, yeah, right now it says, oh, and there it is. The zoning board administrator shall advertise the hearing. Before, it said after asserting that, da-da-da, or whatever. So in the clear version, it just says the boarding, the zoning board administrator shall advertise the hearing on each petition, rather than the extra, the added section that says after asserting that the application is appropriate.
What page do you want, by the way?
On the, on the printed one or not?
On the printed, you get printed.
Three.
Okay, because I, I only got up to page five in my review, so.
Jerry, why don't I make a copy of this for you?
Oh, public notice, public notice.
This one's got all the changes.
Okay.
Do you want that?
I won't be able to do it in this discussion, but.
I added, in section three.
I thought this was all.
Oh, Article three, I mean.
I don't know, that's what it's on. There's too many different versions.
There's a lot of color up there.
Article three. Yes. I added a section here that says for this article, which is the hearings and the meetings and all that stuff, it talks about the chair in a lot of things. Well, so I added as a prelude to that, for this article, the chair is defined as the person assigned to be the chair for the hearing or the meeting. Chair could be either the board chair, the board vice chair, or the board temporary chair as defined in Article One. So, because all of these things talk about the chair, I wanted to make it clear that it's not necessarily the chair that you've ever identified as a chair for that meeting. And again, just, just clarifying it. Under hearings, town, I added a thing, town council may also be present if requested by the board, which.
Because it's E L., not I L. Town council, town counselor.
Yeah, S E L.
S E L.
Yeah, but that's, that's like a town counselor.
Council.
But, but council as in a.
Yes, you're right.
Another one on page six. There's two spots.
Okay, is there another one?
Yeah, on page six, under brief to the board.
Yes.
Under.
S E L. Page six, section six.
Which six we're talking about?
Section six, page six.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Because I think we have a town council, don't we?
Right.
Or some towns have town, council, but this, we're talking about the town attorney, right?
Yeah. Right, yes, yes, you're right.
That was the only thing I had, too, so.
They also request if requested. I did order of business, I did make some changes, but, and you can read, the chair reads the legal advertisement and other documents for the petition into the record, so I just added for the petition, you know, I mean, it's, just clarifying.
Where was that?
Under section five, order of business.
Okay.
Paragraph B. The chair describes the procedure for granting or rejecting petition. I think the only change there is, is, is the. It just says describes the procedure for granting, or re, or granting, rejecting, the chair describes the procedure. Okay. Okay, section D, subsection D is really the one that is, is a, is not a big change, but you'll understand why I did this. The chair announces the board members who will be seated on the petition. Alternate members will only be seated if one of the five members is unable to vote. An alternate member may be seated to replace a regular member by a majority vote of the regular members. That's different than what we've had to date. That, we've always run it this way, but I wanted to put it actually in the, in the actual, you know, in our document. So it's, it'll be obvious here that the alternate members will only be seated if the five members are not here, or the alternate member may be seated to replace a regular member by a majority of the vote. So even if the five of us were here, we could vote to have someone else, due to someone else having better experience in that particular, it might be appropriate to have an alternate member seated rather than a.
Now, we've never voted, is that what you're saying?
We've never done that, right.
But you're, you're saying there's a good purpose for voting?
Right. Right. Yep. This then allows us to, to get by the issue we had before, and, and do it in a legal way.
Yeah.
Section M, I add, section N is upon closing of the hearing, whatever, and then I added at the end, by a majority vote of the seated board, the board may reopen the hearing if new information becomes available prior to taking a vote. So if, say we close the hearing, and we discuss things, and da-da-da-da, and we say, oh my God, you know, there's, and somebody in the, in the audience or whatever, we ask some questions, and it becomes apparent that there's more information that we didn't get, we We could reopen, as long as we haven't taken a vote, we can reopen it for, for public comment. That's, it gives us that flexibility.
If, if someone says something that contradicts what the petitioner said, we want to maybe clarify it.
We want to clarify, and we really can't do that, because we closed the hearing. So the only way to do it is to, as long as we haven't voted yet, we can reopen it.
We had that potential not too long ago.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes. So this gives us a little bit of flexibility that, that, and, you know, I think we would have done it anyway, but we now have a, with this, it would be on rules.
Right.
So, um, and again, "Upon completion of the discussion, the chair requests an emotion be..." So I changed, what I added here in, in a couple of places is, is the process should be, we do all of this stuff, and, and like we always do, I ask for a motion to close. I ask for a motion to, to do something. Um, I, we don't want people making motions without being, without the chair being ready to make a motion. And that's all that, that's all that these things say. Because a lot of times, we're talking about things, and somebody says, "Oh, I, you know, I'm ready." Well, we may not all be ready yet.
That's why you have the vote.
What's that?
That's why you vote to close or not, if you're not ready.
Right. So I think that, that comes up in a couple places. "In the event that the petition includes more than one required approval, each individual required approval shall be voted upon separately." So a lot of times, we would have, like, a special permit and a variance, you know, that kind of thing. So each one of those, and we, that wasn't in the bylaw before, so, I mean, we do it that way, but again, it describes the process that we actually do. Each, each aspect has to be voted independently. And "The chair will declare the petition was granted or rejected and identify the time, the appeal time period."
So.
From here on out, I, I added, because that's where the process stopped originally, and that's not, and really what happens is, after, like, tonight, we had two petitions. So after the first petitions, you follow, you know, you move on to the next petition. And then there's, and then there's, there's the business part of the meeting. So I added a couple of sections. It says, "If the, um, uh, let's see, the, uh, if multiple petitions are to be heard, the chair will announce the additional petitions and the process will continue as above. After all petitions have been heard, the chair will request discussion with any other items on the agenda. After completion of discussions of the agenda items, the chair will request any new discuss, uh, business to be discussed. After completions of discussions, the chair will then say, Barbara, what's, you know, adjourn."
Yes.
Did you put Barbara in?
Yeah, no, I didn't, but it's, so I, I just added those things. It really just identifies the way we actually run the business. It's not just one petition, it's a petition, maybe a second, maybe a third petition, and then there's all business, new business, and then adjourn. And that's the way we, we run it.
And then P, so I got a problem with P. So if we, the petition is granted, and there's a 20-day notice, is that really an appeal no, period? The 20, when we, when everybody, when we approve something?
Yes.
And we say, "You can't do anything."
For 20 days.
And that, is that's, that's an appeal period?
Yes.
Okay. But if we reject it?
It's still, it's, oh, okay.
Right? They don't, they don't appeal back to us, they gotta go.
Um, no, it can be appealed.
Well, can they appeal it? Or this isn't, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Either way, it can be appealed.
It sounds, you know. Appeal to whom?
It would be appealed to the.
To the court.
Yeah, but it, this sounds like it's appealing to us, so.
Okay, so what do you want?
You know, I was, the chair will declare if the petition was granted and identify, yeah, you can leave the, put, "The chair will declare if a petition was granted or rejected, period."
Period.
Right? And then, "If granted, identify."
Um, either way, it can be appealed.
It can be appealed, but they don't have the 20 days. They can do whatever.
No, no, you can only appeal it within 20 days.
If it's been rejected.
Either way.
Okay.
Even if it's rejected or granted, it can be appealed.
Right.
Somebody can appeal if something was granted.
Depends by whom.
Yeah, by, by whom, and it sounds like, this sounds like.
By the, on the petition.
Okay, so.
But it's granted, I understand.
An example of that is.
If we reject it.
We rejected the cell tower.
Yeah.
And within 20 days, they appealed it.
But not to us.
No.
To the courts.
So what kind of wording, I, I, I understand what you mean. It's really identifying who to appeal.
But it sounds like they're, they're appealing to us, and they're not. And the, you know, the, the cell phone.
How about, "The chair will identify a 20-day, uh, that there is a 20-day appeal, uh, appeal."
Period, yeah.
Right.
To either appeal a granted petition, did, did they appeal, if it was granted, do they, does the appeal go to us, or does it go to the courts?
No, nothing ever comes back to us.
Okay, okay.
But we should also identify 20 days from when, because it isn't until the town clerk.
Yes, yes.
And we don't say that here.
Identify that there is a 20-day appeal from the date of.
Filing with the town clerk.
Filing decision.
The decision.
With the town clerk.
Filing with the town clerk.
And I maybe would capitalize the appeal? Kind of makes it look like it's court, rather than not court.
"The chair will identify that there is a 20-day appeal from the date for filing with, uh, filing with town clerk."
Yeah, the decision is filed with town clerk. I have a number of notes here, so you're not gonna like.
Anything else? That's, thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it is, it's just, it goes like, wait, but we're the board of appeals, who they appealing to, so I want, yeah, but we do clarify that, when, I mean, it's really important when it's rejected, that you clarify that, that, you know.
Okay.
Who they're gonna go to.
In, in article four, there's a decision, "Member who was not present for a previous hearing may be allowed to vote on a continuing hearing if he or she reviewed the documentation recording." That's what is there now. And I added, "And has signed an affidavit attesting to the completion of the review and has the adaf, uh, the affidavit signed by town clerk." That's, that's what the law says. So that's, that's what I put in.
Can I have that form available to someone?
I, um, there was a section that said, "In the event that only four members are present at a hearing, a concurring vote of all four members that is required for variances, whatever." Really, I, it's, it's more concise than that. It really is, "A concurring vote of four seated members shall be necessary to grant action." Whether there were four present, five, or seven, makes no difference. You need four to grant. Period. No matter how many are present. So I, um, I just clarified that.
And only five are ever seated. And only five are ever seated.
Right.
Or some of them is four seated.
Right. Even if there's only four seated, you need four.
Four, yeah.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused about that, only from the point of view that it's always been that if there's only four here to vote, we give.
Uh, that's some, that's, that's in another.
Yeah, we give the option.
Another section.
To them. And if, and if they agree to go with four, it has to be all four.
It has to be all four.
Okay, so that's in a different place?
That's in a different section.
Okay.
And we'll get it down.
I told you, I only got to page five, so.
Okay, I added a thing that said, "Each seated member shall vote either to grant or reject petition." By the way, it's not approve and disapprove, grant and reject, I think are the proper words, at least, that's what, that's what town council says. Seated members shall not abstain for voting. In other words, if, if, if the five, if, if we seat five members, five members have to vote. You just can't say, "I don't feel like voting on this one," I, whatever. If you have an issue, and, and there were some times that that may happen, where I don't feel comfortable in this particular case, because you know the, it may not be a, you know, an ethics thing, but, uh, you may feel comfortable just saying, "Don't seat me, because, because I don't, you know, I don't feel comfortable voting on this."
Do you address that in here?
That's at the beginning of it.
At the beginning, it, it appeared to me, and that wasn't a part that I read, it appeared to me as though, uh, like I tried to do in the past, I used to try to, on occasion, just drop out, just to give the alternate people an opportunity to actually get their feet wet. And, uh, but then, I think we were informed by the attorney that I can't do that.
You can't do that.
So.
But if you say.
Unless I had a legal reason to recuse myself.
Right, right. But in this, but in this case, the, all, all this is saying is, you can't, you can't abstain.
Right, that's a different thing.
That's, that's a difference.
Or walk out.
You have to decide before the hearing starts.
Right.
Yes, but once you're seated, you ain't leaving.
Once you're seated, you're voting.
Yeah.
And that's it. That's all I had. But let me go back to what, to your comment, 'cause I want to make sure that, that it is here. And that was, um, if we only have four members, 'cause there is a, um, the decision.
I think it's B, right? Unless, unless four seated members of the board consent there, too, and have to notice.
Now, I believe that's the law.
Yeah.
That is the law. Law says.
It is the law. Not for petition.
I don't recall reading it.
Voting requirements, yeah. Probably.
In a petition which only four board members are capable of hearing the petition, do the members recu, now, that's different.
Yeah, right here, section, it's for, this is page seven, article four, decision, section one, "A quorum of the board shall consist of four members, regular or alternate. Should fewer than five members of this zoning board sit to consider an application, the applicant shall have the right to request the continuance until a time when full five members of the board."
Yeah. But it, it goes on to say that we may get to a point where there are only four members that are capable of, you could have three members that, that know, you know, that are related or live next to, in which case, then, you got, you know, it's, it's gonna be a four, it's gonna be a four, four-member vote.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so that's, that's the changes that I had. I think that's just, first of all, a lot of it is just clearing things up. A lot of things is describing, really, a little bit more detail how we do business. And there were just one or two items that, that are, uh, that are real changes. And, and Jerry, you had a, you had a bunch of comments.
Um, the, uh, there was just another in that discussion that came in my mind, and I slipped it already, so I'll try to get that back. But anyway, uh, here's my suggested, uh, discussion or, uh, cha, changes. In, um, uh, first page, under chair, um, I've written here, "In the introduction narrative to each hearing," meaning what you say, you know, you read the, the petition and so forth, and, uh, and you set the guidelines, and you tell who's gonna vote, so, that's what I'm calling here, uh, the introduction narrative, but you could change the words for that. "To each hearing," that's each hearing, not once a night, "the individual serving as chair shall announce which board members will be the voting members on that hearing." Do you have that in any other place?
Yes.
Okay, is it beyond page five?
Yeah.
I think it's on that.
If it's beyond page five, I don't have.
Likely. It's, it's in the, it's in the, how we run the meeting.
Yeah. This has been kind of a rough week. I was doing some of it.
Under, under section five, order of business.
Okay, so.
"The chair calls the meeting to order. The chair reads the legal advertisement and relevant documents for the petition."
Oh, I've gotten past that.
"The chair describes the procedure for granting. The chair announces to board members who will seat on the petition."
Okay. All right. One thing while you're on that section, uh, I think we should put there about the salute to the flag.
We really need to say, "Call the order of business and do the pledge of allegiance." Do we need to do that?
Well.
I'm okay with it.
Do you need to call the meeting to order?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, and read the, I, I don't care what you do or don't, I, I don't even know.
I don't think you have to have it, we do it.
I don't know.
No, I, I don't.
Yeah, you call the meeting order, and that's how we do it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Tell them all the meetings get called.
But you are trying to make this what we do.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to be precise on, I think, as best I can. I don't even know where that came from. There are many boards in this town, I think, that.
I think many boards in this town need to have one of these things.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
Yes, they don't.
But I'm saying, they also don't pledge allegiance.
That's what, problem number one.
So the chair calls the meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to see some minutes from some of those meetings, too, that never seen yet.
The chair calls the meeting to order and leads the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, I just wrote it.
All right, good, good job.
Very good.
Hey, George is in the minutes now.
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's, he's rolling.
I can get rid of that sentence that I put there, because it's showing up later. So ignore that one. But there is a thing I, that comes back to this on another page, called qualified members. And I have no idea what a qualified, I think it means the ones that you designated to vote.
Qualified members.
It's on the next page, page.
Designating a vote and, who's been here for all of them. Been here, if it's continuance, have to be here, too. To all of them, right?
Page two, second paragraph, it says here, "In the case of both the chair and vice chair being absent or otherwise unable, the board shall have the authority to appoint a temporary chair from among the remaining qualified board members."
Ah.
Who would not be a qualified board member? Who would be remaining?
Yeah.
Somebody who's not voting on that particular case?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
So somebody has to abstain.
That's, it's saying that two people are gone, because the chair and vice chair being absent or unable to serve. So that puts down a five. Uh, so of the remaining qualified.
How about seated?
I'm thinking.
Seated.
Well, I'm thinking, because, um, it could be qualified, that they also don't have a reason to be recused.
Well, if you're seated, then.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
I'm just questioning the word qualified.
Qualified, okay. Seated, I think is probably a better word there.[1688.01]